The last thing I want to do is look at my six camera all night long, so not turning it on. It's a distraction anyway. All right, so with that, it is eleven, it's six forty-six and I'm gonna call this County Council meeting of November fifteenth to order, roll call please.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor Penomar.
Here.
Counselor Greider. Counselor Vistoso.
Here.
Counselor Byers.
Here.
Counselor Perimilla.
Here.
Mayor Eers.
Here.
Mayor, you have a form.
Thank you, Lucero. The next item on the agenda is additions and corrections to it, to the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections, Counselor Clark?
Yes, I move to add a letter from council concerning atrocities in Palestine and Israel to the agenda.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
We have a motion and a second to add a letter to the agenda. This would be under new business.
Twelve point one.
Okay, so we've been moving it to twelve point one. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other, Tom?
Madam Mayor, unless there's been some change, the gentleman from Circles of Care informed me today that he will not be in attendance, so that will be a change to the agenda.
Okay. So we'll strike that item unless he shows up from the agenda and then also I see Adrian, you're here tonight. And at present, we have the executive session scheduled for late into the night. I'd be happy to move it up just for the convenience. Do you have any reasons why we shouldn't move it up?
No.
Okay, is there any, do I need to, Dave, do I need to put it in after a public hearing? Does that, does that, does the public hearing affect where I put it?
Uh, no.
Okay, so let's go ahead and add it as item five point one. You know what, actually, I'm gonna, let's do it right after the public hearing. There was probably people here that don't need to stay and come back, so let's do it as item six point three, we'll go six point three. Are there any other changes or additions? Is there any objection to the current agenda?
I just, I don't know if it's a big deal or not. I, I don't know if it can be under public hearing for an executive session. I just don't wanna cause problems down the road. Yeah, should, should it be a, a big number rather than a something dot something number?
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't think that's gonna impact, okay, anything.
It would just come after public hearings, executive session.
Okay, yeah, thanks. So, Dave, if you would take a look for me at some point, I, I'm, I'm gonna take a, I'm gonna take a motion to approve the agenda, but I think we're supposed to do that, and I have been just asking for consent. So if you could just take a look at the rules for me, I just forgot to do it at some point in time and let us know. But just for, just for the good measure, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
Ma'am. You counsel.
I move to accept the agenda.
We have a motion and a second, motion by Counselor Byers, second by Counselor Penomar to accept the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and by that detail is to accept agenda changes, actually, is what I meant. I think it says something in the council rules. Um, community announcements, staff?
Yes, ma'am. Hector's gonna come up and run through some immediate community announcements for us.
Hello, council, and thank you. So we have a couple of community announcements today, mostly for December. On December second, we'll be hosting our leaf drop off courtesy of Ecology from ten AM to three PM at Behind City Hall, so bring down all your leaves only. The Talent Business Alliance will be hosting a mixer at Osteopathic Healthcare on December fifth from five thirty to seven thirty. Our tree lighting ceremony will be December eighth here at Town Hall from five PM to eight PM. And I do invite Counselor Byers to talk a little more about the December sixteenth Town Craft Ball.
I'm going to wait to talk about that, but thank you for the invitation.
Thank you, council. Additional things we would like for our community to keep in mind would be that Thanksgiving, city offices will be closed from November twenty-third to November, November twenty-fourth, reopening the following Monday. Our holiday gift tree is now at City Hall, and we are accepting gifts for local families. This runs through December sixth. And lastly, we have promised tree certificates available for all local residents who wish to fire harden their landscaping. The fifty dollar gift certificates can be used at local participating nurseries. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other community announcements? Council? All right, Counselor Byers?
Just to call attention to the fact that Lights on Bikes is happening on December sixteenth, I believe it's the ninth annual event hosted by Talent Maker City. I also know Art Boss is having caroling that evening, and I know that there will be wasailing happening around the community that they also, so just making sure we're supporting all of our wonderful community events.
Thank you, Council Byers.
Yep.
And thank you, Hector. Uh, okay, do I have any speakers heard on non-agenda items? All right, seeing none. Uh, moving on to, uh, Luis is not here, so we're gonna move past five point one. Six point one is the ordinance twenty twenty-three dash nine eight zero dash oh amending Title eighteen, eighteen point one nine five, non-conforming uses lots and structures, staff?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, did you want to read the opening statement?
Oh, yeah, thanks.
Um. Madam Mayor.
Counselor Byers?
I just wanted to point out that Counselor Greider has joined us.
Okay. Counselor Greider is present, let the record show, at six fifty-three. Thank you, Counselor Greider. Uh, let's see. Make sure I have all the right stuff here. Um, thank you, Lucero, for providing me with these well-sealed, contained items. Um, all right, so I'm opening, I'm starting with, uh, reading the opening statement. The talent, the Town City Council has the authority to hold legislative hearings in accordance with the Oregon Public Meeting laws. As described in ORS one nine two point six one zero through one nine two point seven one zero, the Town City Council makes the final decisions to approve, modify, or deny. The city planner has determined that the approval criteria that apply to the following application or issue currently before the city are as follows.
Title eighteen, chapter eighteen point one nine. Uh, talent comprehensive plan element A, citizen involvement, Oregon land use planning goals, one, citizen involvement, goal two, land use planning, and Oregon administrative rules, six six zero zero one eight zero zero two zero.
Thank you, Kristen. Um, evidence and testimony in this hearing must be directed towards these criterias or other criteria in the city zoning code, comprehensive plan subdivision code, or other applicable land use and development related regulations that person believes applied to the decision. For you to raise an issue with sufficient clarity and detail to afford the decision makers and the parties, an opportunity to respond accordingly to the issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Before the end of the hearing, any participant may request a continuance. In addition, whether or not there is a continuance, a participant may request that the recording of the proceedings remain open for at least seven days after the hearing. The city council will consider whether or not they will continue the hearing or leave the record open for specified length of time for new written testimony and evidence. When called to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and resident address for the public record. Please direct your comments to the applicable criteria identified by the city staff. And following the time limits are allotted for, the following time limits are allotted for public testimony. The applicant has fifteen minutes. Individuals have five minutes. An individual representing a group has ten minutes. Applicant rebuttal is ten minutes. After listening to testimony and considering the evidence, the city council may uh, vote to approve, approve with conditions, deny or deny the applications unless the matter is continued or tabled to another date specific meeting. If you have any questions or do not understand the procedure, please raise your hand now and ask them now. All right. Um, so.
Staff? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. So this issue before you tonight is the discussion of the City of Talent Municipal Code, Chapter eighteen point one nine oh, non-conforming uses, lots and structures. This code addresses lot structures and uses that are no longer compatible with the zoning and therefore they are non-conforming. And this would address the potential to replace that non-conforming use with us, within a specified period of time. So as you may recall, in two thousand and nineteen, the City of Talent Council adopted a zoning code text amendment. And then that code amendment, which is now Chapter eighteen point four oh, residential high density um, section, uh, point four oh, oh two oh, buildings and uses, use permits subject to type one permit review. Um, that amended to, um, to remove the allowance for detached single families on individual lots. And then following that immediately was the Almeida fire, and which, in which case the mayor declared the City of Talent as the state of emergency due to the fire. This then, um, most of the fire burns car was in our high density residential, um, which then prohibited, uh, the rebuild of single family residences and property owners were, however, we did allow um, property owners to rebuild their homes if they were legally pre-existing. This recent update of the executive order in March one of two thousand and twenty-three has extended this like-for-like rebuild um, until the order expires, which is in September of two thousand and twenty-five. So that's how this all became apart. We had several, um, single family residences, um, come to us and were concerned about the rebuild and not being able to rebuild, um, in perpetuity of their single family dwellings. So the city council then has requested that the proposed code amendment for Chapter eighteen point one nine five be reviewed, which we have done. But this, this actually will not affect the fire victims because that is still under the executive order and that will go away in September two thousand and twenty-five, so that this, this code amendment will not affect them whatsoever. Um, this, but this will make sure that in future natural disasters, the city can provide adequate time to allow people to rebuild their residence or business if it is no longer permitted in, in the zone district. We, um, uh, this, there currently is no provisions in our, um, talent municipal code to allow any non-conforming structure to be replaced in any zone with any, without, within any time zone. So following the study session that we had back in May of seventeen, two thousand and twenty-three, um, Planning Commission held a hearing on July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, and that this code, this proposed code amendment before you tonight was approved unanimously. And I'm happy to go over the code amendments, but in summary, the, it, what we've put in our code is we now, if you are non-conforming, a legally existing, um, uh, non-conforming structure, you can rebuild your structure within a period of two years. And there is an extension provided by the city manager, or you have to request an extension of, of a following year. So this in effect gives you two years to apply for a building permit to rebuild, and a building permit lasts for eighteen months, and you still have that time period to build as well. So that, that would give anybody in that timeframe to, to rebuild their, their existing non-conforming.
Thank you, staff. Does anybody need a deeper dive than the summary? Counselor Penomar, if you have a question?
So, um, one of the things that we experienced during the fire is that there was, you know, everybody was competing, um, to, to rebuild, and there was, you know, a huge weight um, to get some construction help. I imagine that if we, heaven forbid, face something similar, we could always, as a city, um, create another emergency order to provide more time if that was that kind of a situation. But otherwise, it's two years to get the building permit plus the eighteen months.
Absolutely. This is first, somebody's house burns by accident.
Yeah.
This is not a, you know, catastrophic event that we had earlier.
Okay, I just wanna address that, um, uh, Kristen offered to, to go through it. If anybody wants to, let's, let's clear that first. Does anybody want Krista to go through it? Or was the summary adequate? And then I'll open it for more questions. Okay, it looks good. Any other questions, Counselor Penomar?
Yeah, so as far as the seventy-five percent cutoff, okay, so if, um, so could you just clarify for me the difference between the, the seventy-five percent, less than seventy-five percent destruction versus more than seventy-five percent destruction? It looks like I can, I can, um, restore the building and continue with the non-conforming use in both cases. It's just the criteria is a little bit different?
Are, are you referring to what, what is listed in the code? It's both of them to the extent exceeding seventy-five percent of the value, of the, of the appraised value, which is lower than the actual value?
Well, I said, I guess maybe I should have asked her to go through it. Um, I'm just talking about on page sixteen where it says, um, to an extent less than seventy-five percent of the appraised value?
Can you give me the number? I don't have your same page.
Oh, I'm, I'm looking at the red line.
Oh, the, oh, this is F one, notwithstanding, um, legally established structure containing a non-conforming use that is damaged by fire or quake winds, explosion, or other in the event of an extent less than seventy-five percent of the appraised value of the structure. So this is a, the structure of a non-conforming use, um, not actual structure. Um, this would allow if, if the use were damaged, that, if the, if the, if it were damaged, if the structure is damaged less than seventy-five percent as determined by the county assessors, uh, may be restored or reconstructed, but they have, provided that the damage of the structure must be, must have been deliberately caused by the deliberately caused by the owner. So this would not allow them to, to rebuild. The non-conforming use of the structure prior to this destructive event must be resumed within one year thereafter. That's correct, right, Dave? That's what we have in.
Well, I think you missed, excuse me, I, I think you misread it. It's, it's, uh, the damage to the structure must not have been deliberately caused. I think that's what you intended.
Oh, yes, sorry.
That's actually how she explained.
Must not have been, yeah, you can't deliberately cause it and then get here, and then get, sorry.
So if the damage is less than seventy-five percent and you meet these other
criteria.
Three requirements under there, then you can rebuild.
Right, and so we have the seventy-five percent cutoff, and there's slightly different criteria on either side of the seventy-five percent is the way I read it. And I just wanted to make sure I understood what I read.
That's.
Does that make sense?
That's right.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, so at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Any speaker requests on this item? Okay, seeing none, of course, the public hearing. And um, so at this time, we can discuss the evidence or the testimony or, uh, any, anything on the staff report? Anybody have any discussion points? That's funny when you, when you push something forward for as long as this has been going.
Been a while.
We're sort of out of discussion, isn't it?
It has been a while, yeah.
All right, uh, so if there's nothing else to discuss, I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Perimilla.
I move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash nine three eight dash oh for the talent municipal code Title eighteen, Chapter eighteen point one nine five, non-conforming uses, lots and structures.
Second. Hey, I don't have the exact motion in front of me, but I think it was, we have a motion to adopt, um, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash nine eight oh dash oh amending Title eighteen, Chapter eighteen, one point one nine five, uh, non-conforming uses, lots and structures. Any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, roll call please.
Counselor Clark.
Yes.
Counselor Penomar.
Yes.
Counselor Greider.
The same.
What's that, a yes from Greider?
Thumbs up.
She's, she's nodding affirmative and putting a thumbs up. We'll take that as a yes.
Okay, uh, Counselor Vistoso.
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
Counselor Perimilla?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Lucero. Right? Moving on, uh, to item six point two, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash nine eight two dash oh, annex request at eight twenty-one South Pacific Highway. Um, we're gonna do the opening statement. Do I do it again?
Slightly different.
We can just cut the recording out and put it over here. All right. The Town City Council has the authority to build, uh, to hold legislative hearings in accordance with Oregon Public Meeting Law as described in ORS one nine two point six one zero through one nine two point seven one zero. The Town City Council makes the final decisions to approve, modify, or deny. The city planner has determined that the approval criteria that apply to the following applications or issue currently before the city council are as follows.
Talent municipal code eighteen two zero zero point oh two oh and to eighteen two zero zero point oh four oh, Oregon, um, ORS two two, two 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 point one five oh and three zero eight two two five.
Thank you. Evidence and testimony in this hearing must be directed towards these criteria or other criteria in the city's zoning code, comprehensive plan subdivision code, or other applicable land use or development related regulations that the person believes apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient clarity and detail to afford the decision maker and the parties, an opportunity to respond accordingly in the issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Before the end of the hearing, any participant may request a continuance. In addition, whether or not there is a continuance, a participation, a participant may request that the record of the proceedings remain open for at least seven days after the hearing. The city council will consider whether or not they will continue the hearing or leave the record open for a specified period of time for written testimony or evidence. When called to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and residential address for the public record. Please direct your comments to the applicable criteria as identified by city staff. The following time limits are allotted for public testimony. Applicant fifteen minutes, individuals five minutes, and individual representing your group, ten minutes. Applicant rebuttal, ten minutes. After listening to the testimony and considering the evidence, the city council may vote to approve, approve with conditions or deny with the applications, uh, excuse me, or deny the applications unless the matter is continued or tabled and to another date specific meeting. If you have questions or do not understand the procedure, please raise your hand to ask them now. Okay. Uh, staff?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so as you, as you stated, this is a proposed annexation of two point three acres located in the unincorporated area of Jackson County, just adjacent to the city limits. Um, located at eight twenty-one South Pacific Highway. Um, the current zone is general commercial, that's a zone, uh, by the, um, by the county. Once annexed to the city, the zone district will become commercial highway, which will be consistent with the commercial comprehensive plan designation. The subject property is a vacant lot as a result of the Almeida fire. The, um, this isn't within the Jackson Fire, uh, Jackson County Fire District Five. The project has existing utilities to the site and is fully improved, has fully improved access from Highway ninety-nine. The property has exist, um, the applicant is requesting this annexation to be located in the city limits and receive all utilities and benefits associated with being in the city limits. At this time, there is no site development proposed. That, um, but once it is, the project will go through a site plan review with, uh, the planning department. I'm gonna turn this over to the applicant's representative. He has a very detailed, um, uh, PowerPoint for you, so if you don't mind, um, we'll go ahead and I'll share my screen. And invite Zach Moody up.
Thank you, Zach. You know the routine.
No, it's all new.
Stay mad, name and address.
Planner, I get to talk for more than fifteen minutes? We can talk forever, you know? Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council and, uh, staff. Uh, Zach Moody, forty-six twenty, Burn Valley Road, Norfolk, Oregon. Uh, and as Kristen mentioned, um, I, this is detailed as it can be, um, this, the criteria is pretty straightforward. Um, go to the next slide. Um, so as, as Kristen mentioned, this is for an annexation of point two three acres, um, of land, um, adjacent to the city limit boundary. Uh, as you're all aware, there are a number of islands of, uh, land along Highway ninety-nine that, um, I know the city has been trying for, for many years to get, um, these pieces of land annexed and, um, and now the fire has changed that and made this, uh, better opportunity for people to, uh, to come in and do these things and kind of reimagine those lots. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so, um, as you can see in the center of the map there, uh, so this is almost across from the Talent Mobile Estates. If you're not familiar with where the site's at, property owner owns two pieces of property there, owns the one inside the city limits to the north, uh, to the northeast, or excuse me, northwest, um, and then the vacant piece of property that we're talking about now. Uh, the site plan that, um, Kristen spoke to, uh, will not include the northern property. He has different plans for that property, um, some sort of mixed use development at some point, but, um, uh, I guess I probably should have said who the applicant is. The applicant is Carl Ost, um, he owns National Heating and Air Conditioning um, and plans to move his, uh, operations from across the street at the storage unit to this new building. So, uh, following, uh, the approval of this, uh, the property owner will submit an application for site design review for, I wanna say it's approximately thirty-five hundred square foot building, uh, to provide, uh, a location for himself and probably some additional commercial use for others to lease. Uh, next slide. Uh, so the results of the proposed change, as mentioned, uh, point two three acres coming into the commercial, uh, coming into the city limits. As Kristen mentioned, um, it is commercial comprehensive plan designation and the adjacent zones to it are highway commercial. Um, so we'd anticipate that that would be, uh, what the city would, um, have that come into the city limits as. Uh, next slide, please. I think this one's kind of irrelevant, but it does show, uh, the map of all of the comprehensive plan, uh, land around it, showing it is all commercial. And then, uh, the, the zoning map, uh, from the city's website, uh, shows that the adjacent parcel is highway commercial, and then, of course, parcels to the south are still outside the city limits, but along that entire corridor, it's highway commercial. Uh, the standards for review and approval, Kristen mentioned these in the opening statement, um, process, uh, requires that we address Chapter eighteen point two zero annexations. Uh, first foremost, a petition has to be filed by the property owner. Uh, there are, there are multiple ways the annexation can be done, but, uh, this is a petition from the property owner to, uh, annex this land and, uh, the consenting annexation forms, um, which are non-revocable for a period of a year, were submitted, uh, to the city. Uh, the boundary description and the map was prepared by a licensed surveyor, that's, uh, ORS three oh eight two twenty-five. And then, of course, I provided findings, um, addressing the criteria of Chapter eighteen, two hundred point oh four oh, which are the next set of criteria we can talk about. Uh, next slide. I, I'm not gonna go into these in detail. They're, they're in the findings and, of course, Kristen's, um, staff report as well, but just briefly, um, the property has to be in the city's urban growth boundary, it has to be contiguous to, uh, a property for at least six feet, um, that's inside the city limits. Uh, it has to have the proposed, or the, the, the necessary comprehensive plan designation to request that the zone be moved from the general commercial zone from the county to the highway commercial zone in the city. Uh, adequate public facilities are required. Um, the stretch of highway has all of the utilities that you would need to, uh, to develop. Uh, curb gutter and sidewalk, water, sewer, storm, um, and of course, all of that will be reevaluated again at the time of site plan review. all of that will be reevaluated again at the time of site plan review. Uh, and um, I don't believe that there were any comments from any of the agencies that, uh, had any concerns with that. They will have another bite at the apple if they submit the site plan review to provide comment to make sure what we're proposing can be met with the services that are there. And then, uh, let's see, yeah, and then one or more of the following standards that are listed up there towards the bottom of the slide, um, have to be met. There's actually like six in the, uh, in the zoning code, but these are the two that it does meet, that it has all of, uh, these facilities, the consent annexation was provided, um, and, um, the lots and island. And in this case, it's somewhat of an island, but, uh, it needs such for standard, uh, anyway, so, uh, it passes the test of being able to be annexed in, uh, by the city ordinance. Uh, next slide, please. I have a missile here. Uh, so the statutes that Kristen mentioned, O R S two-twenty-two, these are just the procedures. Um, most of the procedures for annexation are held within the statute. Um, they require certain noticing, uh, which Kristen did notice, um, in the, in the newspaper, it has to be noticed for two consecutive, uh, weeks prior to the hearing, uh, that was done, and, um, and then, uh, it has, the, uh, petition either has to be initiated by the legislative body, uh, or by petition from the property owner. So, there's a lot more to the statute than that, but, um, honest face, this application meets all of the statutes of O R S twenty-two, uh, two-twenty-two. Uh, next slide. See, I'm not even gonna use the whole fifteen minutes here. Um, so the requested action, of course, is to pass ordinance twenty-twenty-three-nine-eight-two-dash-oh, uh, for this annexation at eight-twenty-one South Pacific Highway. Uh, again, uh, property owner is excited to bring his business over, uh, to the new, to the new building there. Um, we're designing, I, I believe I gave a sample of site plan, um, what might be coming to you, uh, in the application that we provided. Um, there are some amendments to it. We have to adjust some things. Property boundaries didn't match up the way we thought they did when the survey was done, so we lost a little bit of property. Um, so we're gonna be submitting a property line adjustment, uh, with his property to the north to get his property back, so we can build this, uh, this building, and then uh, we're doing cross-access between both parcels that he owns, so that eventually, if he has a mixed-use development there, um, we can minimize the access, um, onto the highway. Uh, so if that's all I have with that requested action, um, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions of the applicant? Uh, Counsel Penomra?
More, more just curious, um, does this, uh, property receive city water at this point or not?
Uh, you know, I, I can't be clear on that one. There are some properties out there that actually have meters that weren't supposed to have meters. Um, but it's just a product of those properties, uh, on the ground, you can't tell if they're in the city limits or not.
Right.
And so, uh, I, I recall at the time that I was here that there were at least a couple properties out there that had the ability to have water, um, but I'm not sure that they had city water service. This property did have a building on it. Um, and so it's possible, if it did, it already has that. Um, but it's also possible that he may have to change the meter out anyway. Um, if it's a, uh, if it was burnt in the fire, for example, it might just be already capped off. Um, and you might have to purchase a new meter, or they may need a different size meter, uh, depending on what the fire rating is, if this building might have to have, uh, a meter for, uh, his, his business use and then a meter for the fire suppression if there's any required.
Our, our public work superintendent says there is a meter on the site.
The, the, the city meter on the site, okay.
Yeah.
So, so just to follow up, because I'm just curious, and again, this is more about curiosity, the, the, um, you know, because we have quite a few properties there, so I'm taking advantage of knowledge both of you, but, um, uh, yeah, so when it comes into the city, the changes for the property owners, they're gonna start paying, uh, property taxes to the city. Um, but they'll get, you know, the amenities from the city, and that would typically include water, the utility from the city. Um, but what else? Because other things are provided regionally, and I'm just wondering what else.
Uh, so they'll have access to the regional storm facility, right? Um, this property won't have access to the regional detention facility that's being built, but it will have access to, uh, sanitary sewer, uh, through Rogue Valley Sewer Means and then through.
Which is no change.
Which is no change.
Yeah.
Uh, so it was probably already connected with the building there and, and the highway improvements being done. My guess is that there was already a tap for the, for the sewer and the stormwater there. So it'll just, it'll, it'll be reused again, but it could, it could be needed to be oversight, uh, upsized. Uh, it just depends on the amount of impervious surface we're creating for the stormwater and what he plans on doing with his property as far as his sewer needs go. Uh, and, and that wasn't, there was no comment provided by Rogue Valley Sewer for that at this time. They were just, they provided comment to saying that it was there. Um, when we do the site plan review, they'll, they'll be more specific in saying that we have to extend the, you know, the eight-inch line or a lateral, or they'll tell us what we need to do at that point.
Mm-hmm. Typically, uh, if they're outside our city limits, Medford Water won't supply water to it. But, but, it, even if they go and they petition for it, that they're not supplying water outside the city limits unless it's an education or government facility. So, it's an advantage to them to be able to get water.
Right, right.
But this one had water, so they would probably still have the water.
Okay, so.
But, but if they did not have a meter, then they would not be given, if they were outside our city limits, we would not allow them to have been to the city water at all.
But we do have a few outside city limits that are hooked up to city water, I believe.
We, uh, yeah, but Medford won't, won't allow it anymore. Yeah.
Okay.
There, there are a few outside of the city limits that were connected prior to the agreement between the Medford Water Commission prior to the tap service, prior to the tap line being installed. So, you don't see that happen anymore because the, the agreement between Medford Water Commission and the cities that participate in the tap program doesn't allow you to connect outside. So that would be a benefit if this property didn't already have a meter.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but that doesn't mean that they might not pay S T Cs to Medford Water Commission too when they connect, so.
Okay.
Um, I mean, but that, again, I don't know all the specifics of the meter at this point, but, um, we'll go through that.
I was just trying to get a sense of, if I own the property and I was joining the city, what are the long, what are the benefits for me? And one of them would be city.
The big issue is, yeah, well, well, water versus city water.
Exactly, and are there others, uh, benefits?
Uh, sewer, yeah, just, just being able to connect to our utilities is, but other than that, the.
More immediate police response.
Yes, and that's right. Land use is a little different too. I mean, isn't it?
Yeah, the zoning.
Yeah.
The, the zoning is, yeah, so, so this building would be met with a, a fair amount of restrictions if it were to be built in the county. Um, the requirements for county setbacks are enormous, and we probably wouldn't allow the type of, the type of use that he's trying to build here.
Okay.
But more benefit to the city than to him, because he's already getting most of those services. Town police doesn't look at that boundary and not respond. The fire department still responds. Uh, the benefit to the city is he's paying taxes, so it's kind of a cost to him to become in the city because he has to, he'll, he'll be paying a few additional taxes that he wouldn't be normally paying, but the benefit of the land use process and the, um, just the process in general and being involved in the city, uh, which he really wants to be, you know, he's, he's, uh, been excited to get this process going, so.
Yeah, that was my immediate thought when you mentioned he's thinking about building additional spaces for other commercial, you know, I mean, that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because county is rural and this is, yeah.
Yeah, for him, he's gotta get this one under his belt first so that he has, I, I'm guessing, and I'm speaking for him, and I probably shouldn't, but to get money under his belt so he can do the other project, because the other project, if it's a mixed-use project, it's gonna be substantially more expensive than, you know, a, a steel building that's gonna, you know, house his, uh, operation, so.
Yeah, so now we're just developing the pitch for the rest of the property.
Yeah, the taxes were always the issue. Uh, nobody wanted, even though it's, it's pretty nominal, uh, the, the, the idea of having to pay more taxes to have that benefit when you're already receiving the services, people just didn't want to do it, but, so. My pitch would be if somebody's coming to ask for that, we should, we should take that opportunity, or the city should take that opportunity.
Great, thank you. I, I think it's, uh, it's kind of neat that, given how often you tried to work on this over the years, such as the man bringing the band.
I know, when he, when he asked me to work on it, I'm like, man, that's great. I, I'd love to do that. I'd love to see all the other ones coming too, because I know that it does create a lot of, uh, there's a lot of zoning issues there, and some people, I mean, if there's a way to encourage people to, you know, bring those properties in now, you know, through a city-initiated annexation, then that'd be the way to go, so.
Great, thank you, Zach.
Yep.
Any other questions for Zach?
Thank you.
I just have a question for staff. I asked, uh, I just wanna make sure we're not, uh, and I know, uh, I don't mean anything insulting by this, but we're, this, you were gonna look up the code to make sure that this, there's nothing that says this should have gone to planning first.
Can I, I'll read that code to you specifically, because it said that, or, and.
Great, great.
Um, it says, um, uh, whereas city council, the city of Talent, as per eighteen-one-nine-zero-point-oh-six-oh-D-one, required hearings. A minimum of two hearings, one before planning commission, one before the city council, are required for all type for applications except annexations, or only a hearing by the city council is required.
Great, thank you. I appreciate you looking into that. I just don't wanna.
Yeah, no problem.
Step on toes and, or hear about it later.
Yep.
Um, okay, is there any other questions? So I will, uh, open the public hearing. You have a speaker request form, I, are we, uh?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I was.
He called you up as a, as the applicant, so, um, all right, any other? Open public hearing. Okay, uh, so does anybody wanna discuss any of the, any of the, um, information from the applicant or the staff? Or discuss any of the evidence before us? All right. I'll entertain a motion. Counsel Penomra?
Uh, I move to approve ordinance two-zero-two-three-dash-nine-eight-two-dash-oh for annexation of eight-two-one South Pacific Highway to be included in the city limits.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance twenty-twenty-three-dash-nine-eight-two-dash-oh annexation request at eight-twenty-one South Pacific Highway. Is there any further discussion? Counsel Penomra?
I just wanna thank staff and, and the applicant for, um, making this educational and interesting.
Great. Any, any other discussion? All right, uh, roll call please.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Penomra?
Yes.
Counselor Greider? Counselor Pastizo?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
Counselor Paramore?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on to item set six-point-three, which will be an executive session. The city council will now meet in executive session. The execu-, the executive session is held pursuant to O R, uh, let's see, is this one-nine-two-A? Yeah. Make sure. Yeah, uh, pursuant to O R S one-nine-two-point-six-six-zero parentheses-two parentheses-A, which allows the council to meet in executive session to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other persons are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No final decision may be made in executive session. The confidential information discussed in the execu-, executive session is not to be divulged outside of the session without the express permission of the council as a body. At the end of the executive session, I will adjourn the executive session and reconvene the regular session, uh, regular commission meeting. Okay? All right, so we are back in regular session. It's eight-nineteen. I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Byers?
I move to make a conditional offer of employment as talent city manager to Gary Milliman, subject to further background checks and negotiation with Mr. Milliman.
Second. We have a motion and a second uh, to make a conditional offer of employment for the city manager, for the talent city manager to Gary Milliman, subject to further background checks and negotiations with Mr. Milliman. Is there any further discussion? Roll call please.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Penomra?
Yes.
Counselor Greider? Oh, she's. Counselor Pastizo?
Yes.
Counselor Byers?
Yes.
Counselor Paramore?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Let the record show that Counsel Greider was an affirmative vote.
Can, can we unmute Counselor Greider?
I. Yeah, so that's, that's okay. Um, she gave a thumbs up and shook her head to the affirmative, and she's affirming that as well with a smile and a. All right, there it is. Um, okay, and, um, with that, uh, we're gonna go ahead and move on to, I'm gonna also move up item.
Mayor.
Yeah.
Uh, Adrian.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing. I'm gonna move item number, um, nine-point-two up to, uh, six-point-four. Adrian, you wanna come forward and give us an update? Um, thank you. Sorry, that was, uh, that was a good call. It could have, I could have easily been moving us on to future agenda items or something.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, just to give a brief update of the recent happenings as far as the recruitment for the talent city manager goes, on November first, we interviewed the top three remaining applicants. We had three interviews. Uh, that resulted in a tie of the top two. Um, applicant one and applicant two, um, were going to be presented tonight to council. Uh, their names would be presented to council to ask if council wanted to do a third round of interviews, or if council would wanna make an offer, um, to the, uh, top applicant. Um, with the withdraw, the sudden withdraw of one of our applicants for a family emergency for personal reasons, we did have one remaining, um, in our, of, of the tie, and that was Gary Milliman. My question to council tonight was the same question. Did we wanna have a third interview, or was councilor mayor uh, comfortable moving forward with a job offer? And so, uh, council and mayor have decided to, uh, make a job offer to Gary Milliman contingent upon a criminal background and reference check, uh, upon which, uh, well, I'll, I'd be working with Dave to kind of look at that contract, and then I think Dave and I were just discussing, um, he would work with the council to see if, as far as amounts and everything go, and just give it back to the cog for a quick overview. But I think at that point, um, you know, Dave would start that, uh, contract negotiation with the applicant.
Great, and, um, I, you had, uh, you had a score sheet that you were gonna share, um, as part of the presentation. I think you mentioned it while we were in, that you brought it for the public presentation.
I did, and I think I'll need to plug my laptop into where Tom was sitting again, if I could.
Yeah.
Okay, let me grab that. I feel like Goldilocks, I've sat in a lot of chairs.
Okay.
So this is the spreadsheet that I shared with, uh, council tonight. Um, on November first, we had candidate one, two, and three, the results.
Sorry, I don't think this is sharing, it's not sharing to the Zoom, is it? Here comes Hector.
Oh, it's making me look second. I can do that. Just go to city of talent. Oh, there we go. It's always fun when that camera pops on and you don't know it's. Thank you. Okay, um, sorry about that. So November first is is this top, uh, section here where we had candidate one, two, and three, and these were the scores. So candidate one was thirty-nine point eight, candidate two thirty-nine point six, and candidate three twenty-six point six two when we applied the bed, uh, Oregon Veterans Preference Points. At that point, I had prepared to come to council tonight with that second scenario here at the bottom where we had candidate one and candidate two, uh, where I was going to ask council if they wanted to have a third interview of those candidates or if they wanted to move forward with a job offer. Unfortunately, candidate one contacted me, uh, to say that she had a family emergency and was no longer able to relocate to talent. And, um, so tonight's question to council was basically this third scenario here at the bottom, candidate two, and if council would like a third interview or proceed with a job offer contingent upon reference checks and, uh, criminal background check. And council has decided to move forward with candidate two, Gary Milliman.
Great. Any questions or comments? I just wanna say, uh, thank you to the cog for a great process, um, and a great collaboration, um, with the recruiting agency. And then, um, also, I have to say, um, it, there's, there was great value and it brought us a, a, a really good pool of candidates. I don't think I've ever seen quite such a horse race. It's usually one person rises rises, uh, significantly to the top, and here we had two candidates that were, you know, two tenths of a difference, so, um, uh, it was money well spent and, uh, to ha- add that, add that additional piece to it, and as always, and the RV cog always does such a phenomenal job for us. You're great to work with. Adrian, we're so glad you're part of the the cog, and we've had such a great experience with you in particular, and and please, uh, give our best to Anne Marie. She also has always served our city so well. We just feel very blessed to have your organization in our, in our region.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comment? All right, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Yeah. What was the possible score, by the way? What was the, what was the top possible score?
Forty-five.
Forty-five, okay, great. Um, all right. Uh, so the next item on the agenda is, um, do we, do, Tom, do you want me to give you a second to hook up your computer?
Sure.
Because it's city report, it's city manager's report.
Yes. Okay. We're live again. I'm live again. Thank you, Miss, Madam Mayor, members of the council. There are, um, a couple of things I'd like to bring to your attention and did in my report. Uh, one of which was, uh, a proposal by, um, Hector, our community engagement director, and, uh, I think all we really need here is some sort of ideas to whether you'd like us to proceed with a, uh, uh, or what your level of interest would be in, in engaging, uh, the public by a hosted event to introduce them to different committees and commissions that are, uh, currently active in the city. Uh, this is kind of in its formative stage. Is it something that would be dependent upon your level of interest, degree of interest?
Are you talking about the city manager candidate? Oh, just bringing everybody together?
So, um, you know, you, you periodically have people apply for and participate in different committees and commissions. Uh, residents don't always, aren't always familiar with what their role is. The things that they do, um, how they can become involved, that sort of thing. And so this was just kind of a uh, an idea that, uh, we were gonna suggest, um, at some point in the spring, uh, or, or a couple of times a year where you just host uh, an event that brings the representatives from the different committees together so people can become more familiar with them. We did something like this in Central Point, not so much. Uh, it wasn't ex- exclusive to the committees, is actually, uh, introducing citizens to the different departments in the city and different committees that were, uh, part of the city. So this is just an idea that I'd like you to ruminate over, and, uh, if that's something you'd like us to proceed, uh, pursue.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just say, I, I love, it sounds like an open house.
Yeah.
For the city. I love the idea, the departments are there, um, that we can recruit. It's like a job fair where you don't get paid, you know?
Yeah, we can recruit volunteers and stuff like that. I think spring's a great time to do it. Um, on some weeknight or something, I, you know, I think that would be, that would be very cool.
Yeah, we do, uh, that, we do this, we do a summit meeting. We should be doing our summit meetings every fifth Wednesday where all of the commissions are invited to be together, but bringing, bringing the public into that, uh, seems like a pretty neat idea. Counselor Clark?
What was the open house kind of event that we used to have in the community center? Ringing any bells? It was similar to this, but it wasn't specifically around the committees and commissions, but I remember the urban forestry table there like right after it was created.
Yeah.
Hasn't happened in a while, and I can't remember what the name of the event was.
Yeah, it hasn't happened since the fire. Uh, yeah, it's neat. That was a neat event.
But we, and our probably works department actually made polls and and put street signs on top of them with the names of the different departments, committee, so you could kind of follow, uh, find them in a crowd, so to speak. So just something to think about.
Yeah, you know, um, I, I would be interested in seeing something like that in conjunction with, with the event that we used to do, where we also bring organizations into it, and um, it's really just, it's, it's not, it's not specific to any one group of, but it's, it's everybody, and everybody has an opportunity to present their information and, and, um, yeah. So we used to do something very much like this, and actually the department heads were there, and they, they all had their, um, their. Yeah, they, I don't, I don't know if they had their tables or how they, you know, or if they were kind of just like casually, um, socializing, but, um, I, I really like those events, and they were really successful, and they were really crowded, and, um, I think we should like blow this up a little bit and get closer to what we had done before. Um, where, where organizations can be met and committees and commissions can be met as well. Yeah, let's do it.
Okay, thanks. Kristin has hired.
Um, so it sounds like what you're describing is actually a civic and community engagement fair.
Yeah.
Really, and it could be a great opportunity uh, to lure people out who might not otherwise think to come if there's some good questions that we know a lot of the community has, uh, input on that they can participate in answering as a part of that.
Like a survey?
Well, yeah, but not like say, not saying come out and do this fun survey, but like come out and tell us what you think about like this plan for I'm, I'm only using this as an example, even though I know we are moving forward, but the skate park would have brought a lot of people out to like give some input on, so, uh, maybe identifying a, a a few key questions to really publicize as an opportunity for folks to weigh in on.
Yeah, the, and, and as I recall, like the Parks Master Plan was, um, was available at one of them.
I mean, consider the, the, we're at the very initial stages in the Parks Commission of looking at the master plan for just Chuck Roberts Park and figuring out the, all of the moving pieces. Uh, that could be a great thing to be seeking some input in as part of the overall public hearing process.
Yeah. Yeah. That's it's a really cool, it's a cool event, and we should re- revisit it and just bring these two things together. I think they were together before. Um, I think we should just, uh, look at that, that previous event.
Yeah, great idea.
And I like what you called it. What was that?
Civic and community engagement. I think that's perfect.
The other thing too, since we're on the, uh, subject of, um, we are, uh, we, we do wanna host a community event to introduce the candidate if they're, if they're successful, um, on the, on the other side, so, uh, of the negotiations and all that stuff. So if we're successful, we're gonna be working towards that as well. So we're hoping to get, we'll be wanting to get staff support on that. The kid, the council will be, um, doing a, an open house or a social of some kind, um, whoever the candidate ends up being, so, um, I see that may be happening in January.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Cool. Uh, Kristen was, uh, worked with Kristen. She's been successful in recruiting, uh, a new planner uh, to help her with, uh, her load. We offered a job, uh, too, and he accepted, um, the position. This is, uh, Nick Schubert. Uh, he's actually a, a product of the Rogue Valley, uh, went to school here, um, has worked for Jackson County for the last six years, was anxious to be able to move into a small city where he might be able to do more things. And Kristen was happy to bring him in so that she can do more things, um.
So that's. His name?
Pardon?
What's his name?
Nicholas Schubert.
Well, that's good news.
Schubert, and a nice, nice young man, uh, family man. Uh, he's excited to be in the back of the Rogue Valley, or well, he's been here for six years. Was, um, one away to school, but is back, so, uh, we feel very fortunate to get him. Um, he wasn't moving up or around much in the county, and, um, from personal experience, I, when I worked for a county, went to a city ultimately, and, uh, you know, you could see the results of the your professional efforts a lot more readily than you can in a big environment like a county. So, happy to have it. Uh, I wanna give you some updates on, on grant applications. And if you have questions, I can elaborate further, uh, but I, I think you all know that we planted fifty trees in Newbury Park a couple of weeks ago, uh, pretty successful event, and, uh, al- already there's more interest, uh, in, in trees by people who are not in the O W B grant area. And so, um, as they come to the city, um, Hector's been engaging them. Uh, we're kinda keeping Jason and the committee apprised of what uh, is going on, will be going on, but we're ready and can consider using the Pacific Power vouchers and the Promise Tree program that Hector mentioned earlier, uh, in the evening. Uh, Bear Creek Greenway Defensible Space, I think I mentioned, and this is something Jason has asked about in the last few meetings, and what happened to the FEMA money? Um, well, we were informed that we have qualified to receive the FEMA grant award somewhere in the vicinity of one point four million dollars. Uh, however, that's still, I'm, I'm working with O M, O E M staff right now who, uh, have to answer a few questions that FEMA is posing in order for us to stay in, um, uh, in the process and move the grant forward. So that is occurring. Um, I, uh, it, the match has actually been, uh, paid for or will be paid for by the state, so there's really no out-of-pocket expenses, uh, our labor, uh, and that investment, uh, in the grant process. And as Jason and I were talking a little bit before the meeting, um, the more grants we get associated with the Greenway, the more important will be to communicate with, uh, all the parties involved, one of whom we spent some time with this afternoon, to make sure that we're not duplicating our efforts and we're actually getting the, our greatest, um, effect from the, the different grant sources that we are receiving or have received. We've got far martial awards that were the purchase of the equipment, uh, was facilitated. There are, uh, some agreements that we've entered into with Phoenix and Jackson County, um, on, on that award, and there's some other collaborations going on. So that's one of the things that will be engaging the, um, uh, Urban Foresting Committee with and, uh, working together to, um, um, dovetail. The planning and infrastructure economic revitalization program, uh, I won't, I've, I've listed it here, and it's also further in the agenda, but just so you know, we, uh, where my interest is, was in completing this by Friday and getting it submitted to the, uh, uh, peer selection committee. You've probably been made aware of the fact that, uh, um, at the last meeting, the, uh, committee elected to, uh, root Phoenix's request and move forward that, but but make no other selections until after the first of the year in order to give us time to get in, uh, get our grant application in and for other uh, applicants to make amendments to theirs. Uh, I think so ready in particulars kind of pairing theirs back if I'm correct in that understanding. A lot of the work that I'm doing on this is, is not, is dependent upon the, the cooperation assistance of others. I've engaged Nikki, um, in the mapping that uh, is part of the application. I have spoken with Jeff Ballard, who seems to be, uh, otherwise engaged, uh, currently. So I went to, um, uh, Todd Powell, whose company was involved in the Gateway development, and that informed me that they do have ASBills for that, and so he's going to be assisting me in the preparation of portions of this as well, and I'm also waiting for some feedback from the Bedford Water Commission so I can incorporate um, kind of the debt or the, um, liability there, financial liability there, so that we can incorporate that into the the grant application as well and not.
I think it's worth mentioning too, Tom, if you were, um, you may have been pl- planning to, but, uh, you mentioned the other day in a meeting with us that, um, you were, um, gonna incorporate some of the Salazar work.
Yes.
Which is important, I think, because it was the community-led vision that we did for Gateway, and um, we had such a great turnout for that, and um, it really reflected the vision, you know, that reflected the, the will, the desire of our community for that spot.
Correct, and those are the illustrations I gave Todd Powell. Uh, what we're trying to arrive at as a result of this grant, because there are no Tura dollars that can be devoted to this, the grant, the success of the grant will enable us to, um, uh, retrofit that property, set it up so that as the trailers are gradually removed, people are, you know, find places to live, that the site is ready for somebody to develop. Um, the infrastructure has been, you know, reevaluated, the, uh, the representations from Salazar they gave to Powell are the ones that he's gonna be using to, um, make certain that the, um, uh, water, sewer, storm drain, um, et cetera, is, is laid out, not exclusively to address the trailers, but townhomes, uh, senior living, residential buildings, et cetera. So that's where we're going with that.
Can I ask a quick question on that?
Yes.
I won't get us too far in the weeds, I promise. Um, so, uh, you know, we've kind of known all along that the transitional use, the transition, the emergency transitional housing could go as uh, long as the end of twenty twenty-four, and if that's still kind of like the understanding, and it, it looks like it's probably, you know, with the new housing coming open, resettling starting to happen, um, it, that, that's probably not far off those original projections. Uh, it might be a good time to start to work with access to talk about just an outline of a resettlement plan um, so that we can we can proactively support, um, that, um, effort.
Okay.
Um, and work towards that goal as we are also looking towards re-cuing up the, the community vision.
And the Water Commission wants to know when that's gonna happen too. So, cause they deferred SDCs and they, uh, that was contingent upon you know, it's kind of a short time period, so, um, yes.
Well, I think it's the same kind of timeframe as we've always laid out, so they shouldn't be surprised by it.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
The, um, the last thing here is, uh, DLCD grants. Um, we, I talked with a couple of you about this, uh, yesterday. So we, we've been awarded, um, a grant for the, um, fill the lands inventory and, uh, grant, uh, for, um, it's a, uh, the way it's described, it's, uh, Housing Implementation Plan Program Review Update and Feasibility of Railroad District Master Plan. So each of these grants were applied for with a particular scope in mind in order to be, uh, competitive and awarded, and so, uh, each of them are, but they, it's, it's money that sits in the LCD's, um, bank account. But they, it's it's money that sits in the LCD's um bank account. And then they kind of control where this goes. Now, billable lands inventory is 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 directed to cities by statute. And um for those of you who are familiar with what Nikki was doing with the uh the uh dashboard. Uh in the same way that she was assessing properties in terms of their their uh. Recovery, buildability, that sort of thing is it's kind of where we're going with the bill of the lands inventory. What we're trying to do is. Identify remaining buildable lots uh of different zoning categories in the city. And then given our projected population. And, you know, the average persons per household and and number of units that that dictates. We try and marry those two so you know whether or not you need to expand your urban growth boundaries further, whether you have adequate. Uh amount of land for a pro- you know, projected twenty year amount of growth. Uh so that's that's the purpose of the buildable lands and it's a pretty. Uh straightforward process. And so Nikki's the one who's been engaged to help us do that. Um. The other portion, uh when it comes to the Housing Implementation Plan. The department letter that we received says they're prepared to provide a consultant team for the city. Who will then prepare a take the scope of work that was initially submitted. Um. I guess, you know, use that or elaborate on that and then bring that back to us for consideration. And that's what I will bring to you. Once they um put those pieces together and and then you will have the opportunity to make. Changes. Uh there will be a budget associated with that. And um and then we should be happy with the the intent of that particular document, but that's um. That's gonna be looking at at our housing needs, our housing implementation, uh the um. Uh and and other associated criteria. So that's, those are the two D L C D grants that are in the works. And um you'll be kept apprised of what Nikki's doing and you will get to see and have your. Uh input on on the uh the other one, once we get a scope.
Counselor Penamriff?
Yeah, so I just wanted to help me understand just um in terms of the the D L C D uh. Um studies that they've helped us in the past. I think there's some renaming going on. We we did in twenty seventeen, we had the housing needs analysis. And I thought that then there the new term for that was housing production strategy or something like that. Oh, I I could, I I might have it wrong, but I'm I'm just wondering, is this housing implementation plan? Kind of like the housing needs analysis?
Yeah, but it goes a step further. I think the way uh Kristen described it, I mean, they'll actually be. Uh comparing and contrasting the relative benefits of, you know, TA four, TA five. TA one, two. Uh as to where, you know, it would be best, you know, if. As a result of the the uh billable lands inventory and our population projections, we need to expand, which is the best. Possible direction to go, given the.
We're calling, you chaired that C A C for that, listen, before you were a counselor and that was the urban growth boundary.
Citizen Advisory.
Yeah, so that we called it that last time, but that we did that kind of analysis.
This is, this is, I'm really gonna take it to the next level and um. And once they come back with a prescribed scope of work and a budget, bring that to you and you'll get a better. Picture as why as to what their intention is.
So one follow-up is I'm still not quite understanding how this, the Railroad District feasibility. Is that, that sounds like some sort of study specific to the Railroad District.
As you will become increasingly aware moving forward, um. So there are some restrictions on the city to be able to expand. You know, there are limitations. Some of which are created by the the railroad, you know, just accessing land on the west side of the railroad. And yet those are where some of the. Uh urban reserve areas are located. And so when you compare and contrast. The ease with which some areas can be developed as opposed to others, that this will give us a better idea, you know.
Okay, so these are all pieces of.
The airport or the railroad plan. I mean, ideally, is if you could build a a road parallel or whatever going down the west side, you could access more of those tax lots rather than trying. To go over these multiple private crossings or trying to create a new public crossing. Which has been my experience in the past and it's not all skills and beers, my mother used to say. So um. That it'll be looking at those, it'll be looking at those comparisons. That's what she used to say.
I keep track of those things.
Yeah, yeah, life's not all bare and skittles. Um so that's, that's what I have for you with regard to uh my report, that. Managers report that is followed by the Tura analysis and um. I just want to give you a quick update and then hope that as a result of this conversation, we can decide when in December would be the next. Opportunity for the Tura Board to meet. Uh and it will largely be. To go over the the financials and preferably on an evening when Tessa is not. You know, otherwise occupied in historical uh society. So um. I will report and some of you are aware that we made some distributions, uh Gather Cafe came in and we. We've made a sixty five hundred dollar distribution to them. Um. And and Dimple said she's gonna turn that money around and do the painting and come back with another invoice invoices uh. For her business, biscuits and vinyl is done. Got their sign up with it for fifteen hundred dollars, uh Art Bob. We've made a final payment to them and. Ballroom Garage, uh fifteen thousand dollars to reinforce the um the facade and uh. Establish that against seismic um events. And so um. Today, you know, with the recent uh disbursements and uh some of the preliminary disbursements that went out. Uh we spent about forty four thousand dollars of the hundred thousand dollars that were budgeted. And um we'll wait for other other businesses to come in with their invoices. We have. Sunsetted this program, but we'll see if if there really is any money. Well, I think we actually uh. Prove projects that would would go to the hundred and three thousand dollars, but it's likely that um they'll all fall. Below that. And if for some reason there was a, you know, ten thousand dollar. Amount of money remaining, I'd just come back to the board and say, you know, do you want, you want to invite one more candidate? We have. A couple of alternates sitting in. In the files in the office, but and who know that it's been sunsetted, but are standing by in case there's. Uh a benefit. Um.
Sure has made a nice impact in our community. It looks really good and I'm really pleased with. How the program got managed, Tom. Thank you.
Sure, sure. So those are uh, those are what I have in mind. Uh I'm open to your suggestions about. Uh next time to meet um.
You um, when is our regular uh tour meeting scheduled? Did we move it?
It's usually the second Tuesday.
Mayor, we had voted in a public meeting to. Move it to before the start of council meeting on the second, the third Wednesday of the month.
Yeah, we actually did it twice. Yeah. And we haven't done it, we haven't done that yet.
No, we most, we made the motion twice, but it has yet to happen.
We're in a position now where it would probably work if you wanted to do it on the twentieth.
So that'd be on the twentieth.
But wasn't there discussion? Uh I am recalling that. At some point in in my tenure on council, we discussed not holding the second council meeting in December. Due to its proximity to the holidays. So just one more piece.
We could do it on the sixth, you know, as a special session. And I could do pizza. Well, I think that, wasn't that for the rules? I think that was.
Um I uh. What I know is every time you promise this pizza, I'm gonna eat before.
I haven't been able to deliver on that one yet.
But you know, uh I I'm, I wish the city would kind of spread the wealth a little bit and and hit the other restaurants. I have heard a comment, so. Um you know, pizza, tacos, gather.
Beer.
Beer, get a little some beer.
I think they're not for jerking beer.
Yeah.
Um okay, so um Wednesday the sixth, five thirty.
That will be this, the uh study session.
Yeah, okay. Um I do want to say that um our. Uh our bylaws do require us to do a regular meeting and I I take that to mean. A and you know, right like a the third Thursday or whatever. Um so I think we. We need to nail this down. I I know there's some latitude with that, but um I think in the interest of access in public.
Okay.
Uh we should.
We'll notice it for the sixth.
Yeah, and then maybe if that works for us, we can just do it the first Wednesday instead of the third Wednesday.
At six P M?
Is it six or six or five thirty? Do you want us to have a forty-five minute meeting?
I I know, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I think forty-five minute meeting would probably work.
Well, this, in this particular case, I know you were concerned that that was too little time for big issues, but we're down to, you know. The financials and having Tessa come in and kind of explain where we are um. Before you go into the next year.
Great. Sounds like we could do it. Oh, pardon me, you guys. Um all right, is that everything? And did you, um okay, Council Park and then Council Penamriff?
Well, I was gonna jump back to seven point one, so if you have someone just seven point two.
I I think I was gonna jump, is that city updates?
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, you moved so quickly, so so smoothly, so smoothly from. To seven point two that I just, uh I just wanted to um. You know, acknowledge this uh this uh FEMA grant uh for the Bear Creek Greenway. I think it was amended to include a portion of Wagner Creek as well. This is a really tremendous opportunity uh for us. This um you know, goes back to uh um. When Jamie hired Wilson and Associates, my favorite, my favorite memory of this uh was was. Counselor Volkart asking the man from New York exactly what would be done with this money. Um how it would be used on the landscape and it was a funny interaction, but um. This is a tremendous opportunity and like you said, uh coordination um with with the county. Uh conversation with the Bear Creek Restoration Initiative, which is the collaborative uh. Um group here in our area and um. You know, I think that's important. I think that's a responsibility, um you know, that we have to engage uh. In uh, you know, coordinate what we want to do with the broader effort and the other things that are already in place and. And um and and I I interested to learn more about the parameters and of the grant itself, um but um. You know, I don't know what administering the the grant is gonna um entail, but maybe it's the kind of thing where um, you know. Someone uh needs to be appointed to that role, either uh either a hire or a or a contractor or something to oversee that. It was just a. Thought, but um as it develops, I look forward to the conversation continuing.
Well, and John Spees, who's um Jason knows and has been working on another grant. Met with us this afternoon and would like to come to the council at the December meeting to talk a little bit about. Um that project and how we might dovetail some of these um. Together and then some of some of the needs of that operation, you know, in order to get the work done.
I think that would be great. And so we all know, John, uh Tom's referring to John Spees from the Rogue River Watershed Council. Who presented to us uh, oh, you know, I think it was less than a year ago, but getting close to it or something about the uh. About a project just upstream of um Lynn Newbury Park.
Yes, I remember that. Yeah. Um, I'm really glad that you're uh that you are also. Um you know, been tracking this long. Um it's sort of you're the, you're the con, you're the. Continuity and in this process from that moment to this. And I hope you stick with it. I hope you have the capacity to stick with it. Cause we rely on you for this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um and thank you for having John. Yeah, that'll be great. Um all right, is there uh Council Penamriff?
Yeah, I was wondering, um great updates. Do we have an update on the website? City website. Um last I saw the the beta version of the looked really great. It was supposed to be imminent. And I'm just wondering where that's at.
What is it? Um can you come and put your microphone on?
Counselor, thank you. I'm not prepared to talk about it today, uh but I can have a update available for us at the next council meeting. Uh due to some of the transition and additional workload, I've put it to the side for for the moment.
Okay, and I'm um I'm also wondering whether the the current up uh website is updatable.
Absolutely.
Okay, I I'm just wondering if we could, there's um like, there's the mayor election still on there. I'm just. But and and maybe I'm in the minority of people, but it's it's just uh, you know, when the website looks like it's not being cared for. I think that sends uh, it gives an impression. Um so just some things that are very out of date. And that was the one that jumped out at me.
Thank you, Counselor. I'll work with the city manager to uh decrease my workload and address that. Thank you.
Sure. Don't we have an I T manager?
I actually, I actually meant, I mentioned the same thing about a month ago. I did definitely.
Oh, yeah. I I'm sorry, that one has fallen into cracks.
And I, and I, you know, I'm not gonna tell you how to how to do stuff, but I mean, um I think there are things. That can be contracted out. That's, you know, there's lots of people who can do website type stuff. You know, and support under your direction. Um anyway, I would, I would just suggest that. If if that's uh.
I think it's, it's fair to talk about it. This predates, you know, this predates. You as a city manager, this goes back two years and um it is uh. You know, it gets, it gets brought up to us often enough, you know, and uh so.
Okay, well Hector now. Redirect.
Appreciate it. Um okay, uh. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar and um. Uh did, oh, did I, did I see your hand up for? Yeah, um. So the next item on the agenda is the consent calendar and um is there anything on the consolant consent calendar that anybody wants to uh? Bring up or bring out for further discussion? All right, seeing, seeing none. Um. I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Perry Miller?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second to approve the consent calendar. Is there any further discussion?
Just thank you, Shaloo Sero, for her great work.
Yeah, thank you. It's a, it's a minutes of the loser on here. Um all right. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, it looks like uh, did you, did you do your peer report?
Yes, ma'am.
Already, okay. Um and. Update on city manager search happened earlier. Um so we'll move on to uh executive session uh was moved up. Um, new business is twelve point one uh is uh the. Item that was put on the agenda at the beginning of the evening by uh Council Park. So Council Park, I'll punt it over to you.
Yeah, thank you. Um yeah, this is a uh um. Difficult um issue to uh be wrestling with. These are uh difficult times in the world um and feel. Uh a call to conscience to um to raise our voices uh in in. Support of uh human decency, uh compassion and um and. Some effort, make some effort uh to try to put a halt to the uh horrible violence um. Occurring in the Middle East right now and uh. Couple of weeks ago became aware of uh uh you know, one or one city and then another and another that had passed um. Uh resolutions uh regarding the conflict um calling for a ceasefire amongst other things and I um. Started down that road and upon um on uh uh conferring with uh. Uh, conferring with, uh, colleagues and, and, uh, you know. Uh, came to the conclusion that, um, a comprehensive resolution is, is, um. Is, is not ideal to do without, you know, the, without sufficient public input and process and yet. Um. You know, it's an emergency situation and I wanted to find a way to act in a timely fashion and, um, and it's. And it's difficult to know, um, exactly what the best course of action is, um. Uh, but, um, the solution, um, that I arrived at in, um. In conference with, uh, uh, Mayor, uh, and Council Penamara was the drafting of a succinct letter. Um, that, uh, if approved by the council would be delivered to, um. Senator Merkley, uh, Senator Ron Wyden and Representative Cliff Bence. And I can, uh, read that right now for you. Uh, what it says is. I, Darby Ayers Flood, on behalf of myself. And the City Council of the City of Talent. Motivated by deep compassion for all people who are suffering from the horrific ongoing atrocities in Palestine and Israel. Urge you to demand an immediate ceasefire. The release of all hostages and arbitrary, arbitrarily detained people on both sides. Humanitarian aid to help the Palestinian people recover and the suspension of further military funding to Israel. With the greatest urgency. And that's it. Um, it is succinct and to the point and, uh, I present this, uh, to my colleagues. And hope that, um, collectively, um, we can, uh. Raise a voice together, hopefully in a way that, um, will amplify the message, uh, that this violence needs to stop. And that we need to begin helping people that have been affected by it.
Any comments? I just have a couple, if I may, um. In, uh, twenty, twenty sixteen, I think it was, or twenty seventeen, um, we passed a resolution in our community. As a welcoming community that, that protects, um. All religions, uh, people of color and, uh, within our city. And so I think in keeping with. Our values, um, and that, that night will never be forgotten. It was standing room in this room and out the door to the street. In keeping with those values and in light of our proximity to our nation's leadership. Um, I think that, um, a letter from the council, on behalf of the council, is very much our business. And, um, I fully support, um, I had an opportunity to, to read, uh, the letter with Jason today. And I thought it was very, very well written and, um, it reflected the comments that we made with each other. And, um, really just our, our, our highest desire, which is for the horrific. Um, the horrific. Uh. Yeah, I can't even choose words just for the, for it to stop and, and for us to ask our leadership. Our representatives to stop supporting it, so. Thank you so much for the great job you did on that letter and, and I just, uh, as a, as a, as a member of this council. Or as a, as a member of this team, I, uh, I just really appreciate. That letter. Any other comments? Council Byers?
Thank you. I'm really, um, grateful that you brought us before the council. And thank you for that. I think that, um. This has the potential to set a precedent for further speaking out, because this is not the only incident where there are atrocities. Where we could say something as a collective governing body. And, um, so I, I would just like to let that resonate as we make this, this decision. I realize that it does set a precedent for the future and, um. Based on our choice, let us be guided by that precedent.
Good input. Any other comments? Council Penamara?
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Jason, um, for the, the thought you put into that, um. I, I too feel, you know, the frustration. And, um, just to, uh, just to echo what, what the mayor said, um, we as, uh, local elected officials. Do have, um, uh, some influence with our, our senators and our, well, our congressional delegation. And, um, and I, I, I like the way, I like the succinctness of it, the clarity of it, um. And, um, I, I would definitely support a motion that, uh, this council. Um, adopt that letter.
Council Perry Miller?
I agree with all the things that have been said and, um. Yes, deep gratitude to you for all of the work that you did drafting resolution and then drafting this letter. And, um, I especially feel more, um. More. Urgency with this letter because of the fact that there is that really specific call to action. And, um. So I, I would support us signing on to it and, um, hopefully. It will be received and read and taken into account by our representatives. So, thank you.
Yeah.
I just echo what's already been said.
All right, so in the name of humanity, I'll entertain a motion. Council Byers?
I move for council to adopt the letter drafted by Council Clark.
Second, we have a motion and a second to, uh, adopt the letter. Uh, drafted by Jason Clark as, as submitted. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, Council Brighter, did I see your hand go up? Yeah, okay. I wish, uh, I wish I had you on, uh, speaker to add to this conversation, because I.
We could, we could, she couldn't just call it.
Did you have anything you want to add? Okay.
Okay.
Um, all right, um, so I would ask that the, uh, letter be placed on letterhead from the mayor's desk. And, uh, and I'll sign it, uh, when it's, when it's ready.
Yeah, copy here.
Make sure it's on.
It might send it electronically. It'll be easier, right, just to put it.
Once the mayor signs it, we can scan it.
I'll be available tomorrow.
Okay.
I'll be in town tomorrow.
Great.
Um. Okay, thank you, everybody. Uh, the next item is, I thank you again, Council Clark. Um, committee commission reports. Uh, Council Perry Miller?
Um, I have a bit of a T-PAC question slash request. Uh, so T-PAC is very interested in, um, getting some window and door paintings. Into, um, interested downtown businesses for the holiday season and, um. They have come up with an estimated cost for this, which is it would be around six hundred and fifty dollars for ten businesses. Um, so what they're hoping to do is to reallocate some funds. From events that they were hoping to have in the fall that were not able to be realized. And, um, that would be, they were hoping to have an art walk. They were hoping to participate in Dia de los Muertos. Neither of those events were able to, um, they weren't able to participate in those. So my question to council is. Does council feel comfortable with T-PAC reallocating money from those events? Or does council feel like this would need to be some type of budget amendment that T-PAC would need to bring before council? Just because of the tightness of time and they want to do this for a multitude of reasons. But, um, they are excited to do this because it would hopefully impact economic development. It would beautify our town. And it would be something that they could do for the holidays, um.
Any of the windows for the holidays?
So that's my ask. It's a, it's a question. Council Penamara?
Yeah, I think a best amendment, it's way overkill for something like this. It's, it's, you know, it's the same, uh, purpose. It is the same people who are deciding, you know, how, how to spend the money. It's, it's your committee. Um, so, yeah, I, I think that this can be just, you know, with the consent of the council, just go forth.
Yeah, it was, it was the council discretionary fund that was distributed.
Yeah, so.
They are a bunch of little followers.
What if you didn't vote?
Especially Chair Ruiz. Uh, what if what?
Just did vote, why don't you reallocate it and then do a, you know, a request for. For additional, I think we're looking at other committees that might.
They may not need additional funds. Um, they were also hoping to have like a fall, um, city art. Uh, city hall art show that wasn't able to happen, so they have. As, they have the money, they just didn't have it allocated for this specific project. So that's kind of the question.
But it's all in the same vein as you.
Yeah, pointed it out.
It's the same fun.
All of that impacts economic development.
Yeah.
It impacts community.
Okay.
Um, yeah, community development, which is what, what the money was allocated for in the first place, so. Appreciate, appreciate those little wool.
I know.
Talking about like eight hundred bucks or something.
Right, we are, yes, but they'll be very, they'll feel good having council.
It might, it might cost us more staff time to, to do an amendment.
Yeah, so let's not do that. Okay.
Well, thank you. Does the city manager be more, uh, happier with, you know, a motion, uh, more official, you suggested?
Um, I was just suggesting that, I mean, the other committees, I, I mean, this has come up because we have other committees that. Are up against budgets and what have you, and maybe it's just a matter of, um, doing an amendment at some point. Um, in the meantime, if you want to reallocate, you know, that's probably your purview or their purview. But we may be looking at amendments anyways.
Council Byers? Well, rather than thinking about it as like per event, really what all that money for was for supplies, correct?
Uh, the events that they were hoping to, um. It would have been for advertising. It would have been for all kinds of different things.
Okay.
But, I mean, this was a budget that they came up with six months ago.
Right.
And, you know. Things happen and plans change.
Which is, yeah, which is why in the future, it would be really great to just get a list of things that they might do in a year.
And, um, that impact economic development, that impact community, um, development and, um, and, yeah.
I mean, we're not, so we don't have to be so, so rigid and, um, over eight hundred dollars, um, that has ultimately the. A bigger impact, I think, you know, this is, this is an effort that will draw, uh, that will beautify the town during shopping season. It's, 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 it's a, it's a great idea. Um, all right, so, uh, does anybody object to that? I think that's consent to the council.
Thank you. And then just one other tiny update is just that, um, Chair Ruiz will be coming to us in December. To, uh, present, to ask council, um, to review. T-PAC's, uh, draft master plan that they've been working very, very hard on. And, um, she'll also be coming with a question about, um. Uh, public art on, uh, city structures. So that will be in December and, um, she'll be here to present, right, Tom?
Yeah, send it my direction. I'll, I'll set up the agenda, you bet, just, uh. Yeah, has she already contacted?
I contacted you.
Oh, you contacted?
It was like a week ago.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, you're right. I was in Mexico. I was like oblivious. I'm sorry.
And then you came home to that huge project, like, we're very forgiving about all of this. Don't worry.
Yeah, don't worry. We'll talk about this, but just a preview for December.
Yeah, okay, great. All right, uh, Council Byers?
A couple of things for parks and recreation. One, the bathroom is coming for Cameron Springs Park.
What?
They tested at the, the, um, fabrication site, all of the various amenities of the bathroom. And there was a leak, so it has been detained to repair some leak before it's installed. Um, but it's coming, uh, to the, at our last parks meeting, um. It was decided that. I mean, the, the commission would like to hold a study session in January or February. To work closely with staff for a whole brainstorming session on the layout of the park. That is of course publicly noticed, but outside of the regular parks meeting. So that's exciting. Uh, that would be for Chuck Roberts. And then three, we are still seeking, um, two new commission members. To take the place of past commissioners, Gerlinda Smith and Laura Panica. And we will be losing Julie Green at the end of December, and so then we'll need a third as well.
I got a reminder, um, to reach out to one member who I tried to reach out, uh, right after I got it. And I just didn't, uh, catch her and failed to follow up, but I know her really well, so, um, I'll, I'll get, get on it first thing in the morning. Um, and we'll, um, we've been getting some good traction lately, so. Thank you for that great update. Council.
I was not able to attend the last planning commission, so I'm not sure what happened.
Yeah, um, let's see, there was the, uh, project, um. So I was at the planning commission meeting and there was the project, um, down on, um, Valley View. Uh, we've, um, had the project before, um, it was the rezoning. Um, it was the request for rezoning. I did not participate in the meeting and, um. And, uh, the, um, the count, the planning commission made a motion, uh, that didn't, that. The result of will bring that, um. Application to the council, so I'm sure it's incoming. And, um, so I'll just leave it till then to get more information on it. Well, you know, everybody will be hearing about it, but it's on its way in, right?
Yes, ma'am. We were hoping to maybe go back and talk about findings, um, but in view of the fact that that's. Probably not gonna happen. It will come to you. Uh, I have been asked by Kristen and, and, uh. Derek to attend their next meeting and, and, uh, kind of go over, uh, planning one-on-one. They asked me to, to, um, introduce some planning concepts in addition to the conversation that I'd like to have about. An ongoing conversation about cluster development.
Oh, yeah. So is this really, I, I, I hope we're talking about the same thing, right? It's the one, it's the Evan Archer. I think Evan Archer is up. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that, I, I think it was, it was prepared, uh, with findings for approval. But, um, when that motion didn't pass, they weren't in a position with findings to deny it. And there was no action taken and so. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, and, and so within thirty days, that needs to move to the city council. Unless it, you know, for some reason they have time within that thirty day period to take another look at it and prepare it.
Well, my understanding is that it's a legislative matter and findings are required. The reason it's coming to us is because they, they made a motion. To deny it, um, and did not make a recommendation to the council. So it comes to the council and then our options are to either hear it or remand it. I mean, it sounds to me like it was. A, nobody really knew what they were supposed to do. Um, Chair and I got together the next day and sort of set the course right, um. But, uh, so it was, um, it was more of a, just kind of a, a, a process. But I don't, I don't believe they need to have, they needed to have findings.
Okay.
Uh, in a legislative, in that legislative matter, um, and that's not why it's coming to us. It was not coming to us because there's no finding, because of, because they didn't provide findings. It's coming to us, right? It's coming to us because they did not make a recommendation.
That's why it's coming to you. Ultimately, there need to be findings either provided by the council or by the planning commission. Because, uh, otherwise, um. Luba doesn't have a basis for making a decision one way or another if it gets fielded.
Doesn't the staff provide the findings?
They, they.
They 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 did, believing that it would be approved. And I believe there were two, there was a motion and a second, but it it did not pass. And so there was, my understanding, I wasn't there, but my understanding is that there was not a subsequent motion to deny. There's just, they just kind of let it.
Oops. There wasn't, it was a motion to deny. It was a motion to deny, and we're almost out of time, so we should probably talk about this more.
Sorry, I was gonna ask if we needed to move to extend the meeting.
We should probably talk about this more, but I that I yeah, there was, there was a motion to deny it's it's the, there was not a recommendation that was provided, which is what the code, how the code reads, but we can definitely bring this up.
Can I move to extend the meeting for ten extra minutes?
Yes. Second. Motion to ten extra, ten extra minutes to nine forty? Yeah. Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Anyway, I don't want to hold the meeting up. Uh, I I I'm looking forward to hearing more about what you guys are talking about because I I I understood it differently. Counselor Penamara?
Yeah, so Together for Talent, Matt, we're looking at putting the recycling roundup, renaming it and putting it somewhere in the spring and and Hector's helping us find a date uh, for that. We also had Susan Bizou attended the meeting and has applied to become a member and the committee voted unanimously to bring her aboard, and she's a great climate activist, as you know. Um, the, I also went to RV Act. ODOT is had a presentation about how uh, their budget is much smaller on this year and they are leaving vacancies. Uh, they are saying that they're going to have to reduce maintenance and they're talking about the impacts of that. Um, one of the things that that really caught my attention specifically is they were talking about it would be harder for them to provide the personnel to do some of the mowing uh, for fire safety that they do in conjunction with, you know, the county and the cities. Um, they said these impacts, these financial impacts probably wouldn't happen until twenty twenty five. And they're they're going to ask the legislature for a solution, so it's not, you know, it's not done yet. Um, I raised the question that perhaps, you know, for some of this mowing that that needs to be done for fire safety. That if it's already being done in conjunction, for example, with the county, then it might be just a shift of the financial burden more towards the county and and away from ODOT. And the county representative there said that, you know, that they were also watching their budget closely and that it would be, decisions would be made on a case by case basis, which I kind of thought was concerning. Um, but again, that's going to be twenty twenty five, and meanwhile, there may be money found. Um, so, uh, but anyway, ODOT is is pretty concerned about these budget cuts, and they're they're talking to the legislature about it. That's it for me.
Good, good update. Thank you. Counselor Clark?
Uh, yeah. As we said, we had a great event at at Lynn Newbury. Nice turnout, great people. And just need to have a conversation with Lucas from ODOT so we can plant the other side of the driveway. And and the the committee members are going to be doing some outreach to the neighborhood over there around the Summer Place Wetlands and uh, just informing folks of what's going to be happening there later this winter. They'll be starting on that soon. But just brought to me my attention just before this meeting, the Julie, the committee chair, called me and and was saying that the the expense of hiring Nikki at some point began to be drawn out of our meager five hundred dollar budget for our committee. Um, which was the first I'd heard of that. You know, uh, she was working with staff and sometimes coming to the meetings on their on the master plan meetings with the national parks folks and stuff. But it was never brought to our committee, you know. Would you like to hire this consultant at seventy five dollars an hour with your five hundred dollar budget? That was never presented to us at that in that way. And so I was surprised to learn that 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 is how it was accounted for by the city and that we are over budget, apparently. I'd like to reconcile that or or figure out a way. I mean, it it seems to me anything that a that a committee does with their five hundred dollar budget comes through a motion that at least they passed to say we would like to spend this money in this way. Right? I mean, no one, no one member of a committee makes a decision to spend any portion of that five hundred dollars. It comes with a motion. Hey, you know, I moved that we spend two hundred dollars or whatever it costs to work with Talent Maker City to screen printish some shirts. I think that was a motion that we made, thought we had money for. And and I remember, you know, you did say before, I'm not, you said, I think the urban forestry budget is about tapped out before. So I did hear you say that. And I wasn't looking at the numbers and I, you know, like, well, what do you exactly mean? Surely, you know, I was just thinking of the things that we had passed motions for um, to to date, and it hadn't gotten up to five hundred in my mind, and I don't think it was yet. So, anyway. I'd like to talk more about that.
Yeah.
Because it just was never presented to us that way.
Well, and and we don't know who from the committee may have asked her to do work. But she keeps billing us, so we we probably need to have conversations.
The re, yeah, the recent, the most recent thing was was, you know, could she make us some maps for the workshop that we did? And that's I don't believe there's been any further requests that I know of and
But there may have been some earlier requests.
May have, yeah, again.
Yeah, so we'll, there's, we'll chat about, see if we can't get that managed. But, yeah, we a lot of her efforts were billed to and taken from the planning department, but there's other work that I think was, she was asked to do that may not have been.
Yeah, it it, yeah, it may just have been a lack of clarity going back a while.
Yeah.
You know.
Can I, can I ask a question? So she's an employee of the city, is that right? She's, she's a contractor, but she's a contractor under the management of the city, right? So who allocates her time? And and my point is, is that
Now, it's me.
Yeah, but was it some
Previously.
Previously, like, like, isn't the process that that a committee or commission making a request for an allocation of staff time needs to go through the city manager and it needs to be approved by the city manager? And then presumably, the city manager would let the committee or commission know that, hey, uh, this, this is going to cost you if you if you want us to, if I'll I'll allow it, but I, it's going to cost you.
Yeah.
Um, like, it sounds to me like this whole thing was at a process. One thing for sure is that committee and commissions don't direct staff. They just don't direct staff. And how how does that Nikki ended up doing this work for a committee and commission without the approval of the city manager is concerning as well. And I think that needs to be
Well, yeah, I think it was approved or I mean, this, this goes back to when Jordan was our city manager. And and so it did not take the form of, never took the form of my knowledge, the committee making the request of the city or or, you know, communicating directly with Nikki about directing her work. To my knowledge, that never happened. It was it was like this organic process in which Nikki was working with Mike when he was employed by the city. And then and so and then began to attend the meetings with the park service.
So it sounds like it was maybe under Jordan's purview. I think that that needs to be straightened out, and we just need to revisit roles and responsibilities in general. We need to revisit that. And um, I mean, I I I agree that if if it was under the city manager's purview and and it was approved by the city manager, that work was approved. Then there's that the the missing step is to to inform the committee where the funding was going to come from and let you guys make an informed decision about that. When we assign those discretionary funds over to you, you have some of that discretion. So I I appreciate that this has come up because I think it overall highlights a need for just roles and responsibilities, which I've, we I've talked with Dave and I've talked with Tom and I, on both sides. We just need to clean the lines up a little bit and and get everybody back in their lanes. Um, and doing, doing what we need.
Well, I'd be happy to meet with you as representatives to these committees and talk about modifications to budgets because it sounds like you know, we'll go into another, you'll go into another budget process next year, but it you know, if you need to allocate more or if there needs to be an amendment now so that you can complete work that you'd like to see done before the next budget cycle, let's talk.
Yeah, well, one thing we do know is that we allocated that money to the Urban Forestry Committee for a purpose. And it sounds like this, it was spent for something else, and it just may be incidental. But this is just, there's, I think, there's just room for clarity here. But I want to make sure that, you know, um, staff isn't overstepping. Committee and commissions isn't overstepping. We're not, everybody's back in their lanes, and it just makes things easier and friendlier and all the way around, a better process. So
Amen.
Um, maybe we better visit that soon. We keep putting it off, you know, let's talk about roles and responsibility. We keep putting it off. Maybe it's time to to queue it up.
Yep, and and just to follow up, you know, after we did the workshop and and I did, you know, talk to Tom about Nikki making a few maps for that, and and that was great to have him, by the way. I said that, you know, I would and I've communicated to the committee that in our next meeting with the park service about the master plan, if we want to use Nikki services, then we need to get an idea of how much how much work that would be. And if we want to make a request, then that will come as a, you know, a request slash recommendation with council.
Great. I would hope it would start with a a query to the city manager.
Yeah.
Um, do, does the staff even have the capacity to help out, you know, from that standpoint? And if not, um, looking at, maybe looking at a consultant or something like that. Yeah, great. Um, I think we all want the same thing. We just need to get in our own lanes.
Yeah.
All right. So this was good that it came up. Thank you. Is there any other committee reports? All right, nine thirty seven. We'll give everybody back three minutes of their night.
Yeah, I just uh, wanted to say a huge thank you to Counselor Penamara for serving our city so well on the peer selection committee. That's one committee report you didn't report on, but yeah, talent couldn't have a fiercer advocate, and she's a real pleasure, pleasure to watch. So, thank you.
But I'm trying to be collaborative.
You know, collaborative and and on track with public meeting law. It's not mutually exclusive. We're crying out loud. Uh, yes, I did, I I echo that. You've you've been amazing. Um, so, uh, is there any other business for future agenda? No, written communications, there are none. This is adjourned at nine thirty eight.